Okay, so welcome to the continuation of Falmouth Board of Selectment meetings April 30th, 2012. And as Pat Flynn always says, if anyone other than FCTV is recording this meeting, would you please announce yourselves to all present?
I'm Alex Lee Fire of the Wall Street.
Anybody else recording the meeting other than FCTV?
Mike Lenders Cape Cod Broadcasting.
No other recordings? Okay. Well, thank you. I must say it's a pleasure. Welcome to Falmouth. All of those of you who haven't been here before. It's a beautiful spring day. It's nice to see a lot of our residents exercising their First Amendment rights, and we've got a meeting to start. So gentlemen, if you would, please rise. Are you recording for whom?
Channel five.
Thank you.
Sorry.
... To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, a minute early. If we have, we're going to begin today with a report by the Falmouth Dog Park. I believe, Barbara, you've got a presentation for us? Please identify yourself for those watching at home.
I will do so. I am Barbara Schneider. I am speaking today representing the entire Falmouth Dog Park Board of Trustees, and I'd like them to stand so you can see their faces. And I'd also like to applaud these volunteers for their many hours of service. So would you stand, please?
Thank you.
And I have their names up here tonight. I'm sorry that it looks like some of them weren't able to find parking places or to get here. Since opening day, May 1st, 2011, we have accomplished so much. We have held three training sessions that prepared a total of 26 stewards who volunteer anywhere from one to four times a month to make sure the dog park is clean and safe for canines and humans alike. And if there are any of the volunteers here in the audience today, thank you for what you do, and we couldn't do this without you. We have held two doggie bowls involving nearly 100 people and raising approximately $5,500. We have held a Name the Mascot contest in cooperation with many of our Falmouth Elementary School teachers and their classes, who nominated a number of names. And voting for this contest is town-wide and ends this Friday, May 4th, at 4:00 p.m. The winning name and the classroom that nominated that name will be announced at our first birthday celebration next Sunday, May 6th, at 1:00 p.m. at the park. And I'd like to give you each one of these.
Thank you very much.
Decals. Ooh, magnets.
We have had two spa days, both for humans and dogs, thanks to four local businesses which have raised over $1,000. We have had a costume party at Halloween, and a pool party in the dog days of August. We worked with two local artists who designed a mosaic wall, taught community members how to craft parts of the mosaic, and installed a wonderful piece of artwork as part of a memorial bench called Cleo's Corner. We have worked with PAL to help children become more comfortable with dogs, how to approach unknown dogs, and to learn what dogs can do when trained as companion animals. We have teamed up with local vets to get dogs kennel cough vaccinations, learn about canine flu and the vaccinations for it, and to teach dog owners some basic emergency medicine techniques that can save a trip to the vet. And in early June, we will be offering another workshop on the effects of the sun's rays on dogs, and how to protect canines from them, thanks to a grant from the Cape Cod Foundation through the Thomas C. McGowan Fund for Animals. That grant also helped us to buy a bench to place in the shade, which will be dedicated this Sunday as well. We partnered with Friends of Falmouth Dogs to hold a "How to Enjoy Your Experiences at the Park" session. We were the benefactors of the proceeds from Cape Canine Cardio's 2011 K-9 5K, which helped us add our newest bench, and the Hollis and Ermine Lovell Charitable Foundation grant, which provided an educational kiosk with the craftsmanship of RA builders. We also received grants from the Commission for Disabilities that paid for paved handicap parking for disabled humans and dogs, and a walkway that helps those with physical challenges access the picnic table and view the information in the kiosk. And this picnic table provides wheelchair accessibility. I want to add that all of this work was done by Falmouth builders, pavers, and even line strippers. We partnered with the Barnstable County Sheriff's Department to have those in corrections programs help spread stone, sand, and wood chips. And we are partnering with the DPW's AmeriCorps Cape Cod Volunteer, Kelsey Boyd, who's here tonight, to increase awareness to protect our storm drains as part of the Stormwater Program for the Town of Falmouth Department of Public Works Engineering Division. We will be holding a Spokes Dog Contest for Scoop the Poop, an effort that will take place starting during May, during our birthday celebration. And Kelsey would like to give you each one of these posters and hope that you'll find a special place for it to get this word out. So hopefully dogs will show up this Sunday to have pictures taken as part of the competition for the Spokes Dog.
Spokes Dog.
We developed a Facebook page, a website, an almost monthly newsletter, and numerous e-blasts to inform people about our programs, any security or health issues, and even to alert other dog owners about a missing dog. We will kick off our newest program, May 6th, when members of the Dog Park Board will be available once a month at the dog park to hear concerns, ideas, or just to meet and greet our canine visitors. And we will hold a Dog Park Community Forum Tuesday, May 8th, at 7:00 in the Bay Room of the main library, so people can bring their ideas and concerns, and even entertaining stories. In addition I would like to, in addition to the efforts of the town's DPW staff and crews, I would like to thank the 28 local businesses that donated their time, resources, and in some cases, actual materials to make the physical parts of the park what they are today. I have provided the list to you on a handout as well. And I want to thank all the volunteers and donors, both individual and businesses, and the Board of Together We Can, that helped make this park a reality and fund its first year of existence. In addition to the funds to build the park, we were able to raise the funds to undertake a costly driveway flooding repair. And here, I want to give a big shout-out to Arthur Aldridge, who really became our hero, along with Peter McConerty, who helped us figure out the size of this issue and the correct fix for it. We were also able to fund our fees for establishing our organization as a 501(c)(3), as well as the funds needed for annual costs of insurance, poop mitts, poop garbage bags, trash bags, stone, sand, and so on, to refresh the surfaces and cover our print costs and drain maintenance. And in closing, I would like to say that we have consulted with citizen groups, and the ACO, from Barnstable, Yarmouth, Dennis, and even Cheshire, Connecticut, who are asking for our help and advice in creating either better or new parks in their communities.
Thank you very much, Barbara, for that report. I'd like to open up questions from the board, but I think this is really a fantastic demonstration of how the public can, well, public perhaps could have worked a little more with the private on this side, too, to create this enterprise. But we can't thank you enough for all the work that you and the Dog Park Board and all of the volunteers have done to make this a reality.
I think that at the end, I want to stress those two lists that I put up there. Every person who came to work at the park gave something toward that project. They either really reduced prices, or even in some cases, did the job for nothing. I can't stress enough how important that was to our success in being able to open the park. You see that we have neighboring towns still trying to raise the funds. What we found is that in a community like this, where you have wonderful people doing jobs that help build such a park, they are more likely to help you with their doing the work than they can contribute dollars. And by putting that together with the people who did give dollars, we've been up and running for a year, and others will be struggling for some time to get off the ground. And we have a lot of people in this room that have played an important part. I also have to thank the, there have been 365 days of somebody showing up once or twice to, every day, to make sure that park is sanitary, picked up, well-stocked with bags. And when people called me, today I had a call from somebody who wants to do one of these in Medford. And she couldn't believe when I told her we had a steward every day at the park. She said, "I don't know that we'd ever get a group of people like that." Well, as you see, Falmouth steps up when they think that they need something done. And luckily, they thought this was worth doing, and we've had great support. Are there any questions I can answer?
Are there any questions for Barbara? Well, I have one question, actually. One of your last, one of your last slides mentions Falmouth Dog Parks Incorporated. It's plural. Do you have plans?
Well, we were very careful. As you know, we've got a wonderful group that makes up this board, and they're very forward-thinking. Matt McNamara was part of that in the beginning. And we were careful when we named this, because what, once you go in for the 501(c)(3), you don't want to have to do that ever again. And in the event that the villages start to realize that there'd be some reason to have one, perhaps, in somewhere like Woods Hole, these are the kinds of things we wanted to be careful to provide in our planning and in our structure. And so that's why the name. We never know.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Nope. Not at all. This is very informative. Thank you very much, Barbara.
Well, as we've scheduled so much time for this, if I may, I'm going to read through the list of the Board of Directors to put into the record here and to thank you all again. Formerly, I'm not, I recognize the faces, but I can't put names to every face in the crowd there. So on the Falmouth Dog Park Board, we have Barbara Schneider, who's our president, and this is a fine presentation tonight. Carol Dimkowski.
Is she with us this evening?
Ah, thank you very much. Ellen Barrell is our clerk, is your clerk. Frank Alfano, Lisa Cannavan, Mort Cohen, Tom Garland, Lillian Hauser, Helen Kennedy is here tonight, Teresa Martins, Pam Rothstein, Michael Simino, and Stan Terrell, Terrell, are all on the Board of Directors. And again, to just emphasize to the board here, to remind the board that there are dozens of companies in town who helped with this, and again, many dozens of volunteers. It's quite a feat, 365 days a year of stewardship. I know that when this whole thing started, we were concerned about what would happen, because of course, the town still owns the land, and the dog park is doing, in my opinion, the dog park, you folks are doing a fine job maintaining.
Well, as you know, a week ago, Delphae Excavating came in and reset the one drain that existed and put in the second donated drain. And next, next week, before next Friday, Arthur Aldridge will go in and pave that first half of the driveway, and then regrade the whole back of the driveway. And so by a week from this Friday, everything will be completed with the driveway correction. And at that point, we should have a really functional dog park and piece of land that's recreation use. So, and it is well-used. I didn't tell you this, but in our first year, we have gone through 20,000 poop bags, and that does not include all the bags that people bring themselves and donate. And we have a sleeve that collects plastic bags, so people can recycle their grocery bags. But that's an amazing amount, and that's why it costs us about $4,500 to $5,000 a year to keep it insured, and poop bags and garbage bags in supply, and replenish stone. This weekend, the Falmouth Jewish Congregation will be doing their volunteer annual workday at the dog park, and we will be sprucing it all up in time for our 1:00 birthday on Sunday. And we invite everyone in the town to come out.
I wish you plenty of sunshine for all those happy tails that will be wagging at your, there you're well-maintained. And thank you very much for caring for the town property as if it were your own.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, great. Well, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing that has to be held at 7:30. So shall we, it pleases the board, I guess, move on to the summary of actions to begin with. Number one, we have a proclamation that was requested by the Woods Hole Inn regarding their historic redevelopment. Number two is to approve the request for special events, the Old Stone Dog Day fundraising event at the LNT Mitchell Bath House on June 9th, 2012. Number three is to, actually, okay, and they were waived their fee, number two, because the association is trying to raise funds for Falmouth Beaches. Number three is to approve a request for special events, Walks for Locks for Love, Community Connections Club, Falmouth High School, on May 20th. Number four.
Hold.
Number five is to approve, oh, let's go through, let me hold number five, the annual seasonal license renewals, we'll go through that in a moment. And then number six is to authorize the resale or decline right of refusal for Seven Melissa Ann Rowe.
Hold.
Okay.
Can we hold number one, too, please?
Number one also? Okay, so we're holding one, holding four, five, and six. So if I can have a motion for actions two and three?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Four, zero, please. Okay, number one, please.
Madam Chair, would I hold this, because I'd like it read into the record if we could?
Okay.
Unfortunately, I don't have the voice.
You don't have the voice. Would you care to volunteer somebody to read it into the record here? Brent, you're good at reading things, proclamations.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
While I find my page here for the rest of stuff.
Whereas, the building now known as the Woods Hole Inn was built in its present location in the 1870s to provide lodging for guests, and it has been in near continuous use as such ever since. And whereas Elizabeth Colt and Peter Simons purchased the historic property at 28 Water Street from Robert and Claudette Schneider in 2008, much of the building had been converted from guest lodging into permanent accommodations for the owners and their children. There was considerable deferred maintenance. Before Colt and Simons took ownership, various alternative uses for the property were considered by prospective buyers, several of which would have ended its historic role as an inn, including the possibility of tearing the building down. And whereas, believing that the value of the building, like the value of the larger Falmouth community, rested in large part on its history and legacy, Colt and Simons wanted to preserve and restore the building in its appearance and its purpose. They worked with the Town of Falmouth, Keenan and Kenny Architects, and V&amp;V Construction to complete extensive renovations in 2012, increasing the number of guest rooms to 14, and significantly improving the structure with a new roof, insulated windows, siding, exterior stair, fire safety and sprinkler systems, plumbing for seven new baths, and construction of staff housing on the previously unoccupied top floor. And whereas Colt and Simons have maintained the historic character of the building, both on the exterior with a new Queen Anne-style gabled stairway, and on the interior by salvaging original building materials, creating wallpaper from 1946-era check-in cards, preserving old wooden floors, antique bathtubs and radiators, and many other period details. And whereas, Colt and Simons are dedicated to the preservation of Woods Hole and Falmouth as a place to treasure history and the natural beauty of the region, and to share these blessings with family, friends, and visitors from all parts of the world. Now therefore, we, Mary Pat Flynn, Melissa C. Freitag, Brent Putnam, David Braga, and Kevin Murphy, as selectmen of the Town of Falmouth by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim our appreciation for Woods Hole Inn historic redevelopment.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Four, nothing. So that was number one. Two, three, number four, approve a request for one-day liquor license for the Portuguese Festival, the Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society, on May 27th, 2012. Kevin, you held this one?
Yes, because my disclosure, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic season liquor license.
Okay, so.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Four, nothing. Thank you. And then number five, I had requested, oh, where's my list? There's the list. Requested that we hold, we have some seasonal license renewals for 2012. We have secondhand dealers, Cape Cod Gold and Silver on V. Press Drive in Falmouth. We have a lodging house at Chappaquod Inn on West Falmouth Highway in West Falmouth. We have the bowling alley at Leary Family Amusements. And we have an automatic amusement devices license also at Leary Family Amusements. Do you have a motion for those?
I make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Four, nothing. And David, you asked to hold the authorize a resale, decline, right, a first refusal for Seven Melissa Ann Rowe.
Madam Chair, the reason I did that was, I saw it on the, on the agenda, and then tonight, when I had come in, I received this packet relative to that, from Sarri Budrow from zoning, and I was trying to absorb all these pages before I make my vote. So that was the reason I held it. So just, if someone could just explain to me better, because this packet references in an email from Sarri Budrow to our office, number 16. And on the list, it says, "Under the deed restrictions attached to the affordable units, the Falmouth Housing Authority shall be included in any group of agencies to be notified of a sale or foreclosure relative to this affordable unit." And before I take my vote, I just wanted to make sure I was fully aware of what I was voting on, now that I have this packet.
Okay, well, basically, I believe what we're doing is, we have the first right of refusal.
Yep.
The piece of property goes up for sale, and I believe it's, who owns it? The Falmouth Housing, the Falmouth Housing Corporation owns it. And it's actually the current tenant who is hoping to purchase this property. And this current tenant is indeed income-qualified to purchase this. So this house is not leaving its affordability status.
Okay.
It's just, Falmouth is giving up its, its option to purchase the house, and it's going to stay, it will remain an affordable, a member, a piece of the Falmouth affordable housing stock.
Okay. That was my, that was my concern. I mean, I know there's been discussion to the two other, the one on Locust and the Dillingham Avenue. I just want to make sure this is separate, so.
Yeah, so we're not losing any of our affordable housing stock, and it's actually going to the, to the woman who's renting it right now.
Okay.
If she manages to get her financing.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so would you care to continue holding this?
Nope. I will release my hold, and I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you.
The second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. So, where do we sign this one? Just on?
There's no signature.
There's no signature on this?
Prepare a letter.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for holding that, David. So on that note, we still have five minutes before our public hearing at 7:30, so.
We can't do nine, can we? Because that's not a hearing. Is that going to take too long?
Actually, we, we could do that. That's a good idea, because we're going to have to sign all these Mylar sheets, so why don't we do that?
For Heather is, Heather, I can make you a room right down here, if you want to spread them out and sign them now. Do you want to do that?
Yeah, so if nobody objects, then we'll move to, thank you, David. Nobody objects, we'll move to number nine on the agenda, which is to vote, to adopt the order of taking pro-layout of Austin Stokes Drive, Riddlin's Road, Regis Road, and Shepherd Place. And if you, gentlemen, do recall, we voted this last year, and we had town meeting voted last year, and we had gone through all the paperwork, and had signed, have signed these before. And unfortunately, it was done on the wrong paper, and our signature was washed away. So wait, David, we haven't voted to do this yet. We still need to vote to, to do the takings. This has, of course, gone through town meeting.
Yes.
It's been approved by town meeting again. And so do I have a motion on the table?
I make the motion.
Okay. The second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? No? No. Okay, four, zero. If we could just all line up and sign these, we have a special pen that won't, that won't wash away. And if we could all just line up and sign these, that would be great. Pardon us while we pause the meeting for a moment here. Very exciting.
It's also documents, definitely, sir.
Okay, we have a document. Yes, I've got it.
Do we have several?
No, we just have one page here, and we've got, what, five Mylars? Oh.
Okay, Brett.
Yep. Here's this one. Wait, do we have two?
That's what I was wondering.
It's probably duplicate.
I don't know, it's going to complicate things.
Well, you can, yeah, sign everything that's assigned here.
Oh.
Let's remove this ahead, David.
Eight, seven, or eight?
Assuming that these are all accurate, right?
Everything's.
For years. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No, I didn't. We have to sign both?
That's okay.
Okay. Eight, seven or eight?
Assuming that these are all accurate, right?
Everything's...
For years. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I signed each of them. I don't know if there's one else.
Yes, we did.
Okay. Chipping all around here. So, at 7:30 on the agenda, if we move to agenda item number four, please, we have an application for a new wine and malt common victualler license for Jimmy Brown's Cafe at 339 East Falmouth Highway. So, notice is hereby given under chapter 138 of the general laws as amended that Family Ventures Incorporated, doing business as Jimmy Brown's Cafe, has applied for a new wine and malt common victualler license to be exercised at 339 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, Mass. A hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, April 30th, 2012, at 7:30 on the above application. So, is there anybody here to represent Jimmy Brown's Cafe, perhaps? Good evening, sir, would you please?
Manager.
Yes? Oops, excuse me.
For disclosure purposes, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license.
Okay, thank you very much. Sir, would you mind coming up to the lectern and introducing yourself to the audience and our recording secretary? Please come up to the lectern, introduce yourselves to the audience and please speak at the microphones so viewers at home have the benefit of your testimony. You're welcome.
Thank you. My name's Don Long. This is my son, Chris Long. I'm the only officer currently of Family Ventures Incorporated. We're starting a new venture, if you will, a new restaurant. We formerly, my family, we ran the Doghouse Restaurant in Dennisport for 10 years. We sold it two years ago. And we decided we wanted to get back into the restaurant business, so we're intending to open our new restaurant called Jimmy Brown's Restaurant, probably in four to five weeks if everything goes according to schedule. But we're hoping, right, as part of this, we wanted to have available to customers who might like to have a glass of beer or a glass of wine with their meal, that wine and beer. So, we're applying tonight for approval to serve those beverages. My son, Chris, by the way, is going to be the chef there. My son, John, is also in the audience and he'll be there. And he'll be a member of our family, as a matter of fact, at the restaurant at all times. So, we're here tonight to answer any questions or concerns that anyone might have.
Thank you. Chris, do you have anything to add to?
I think he said it all.
Great, thank you. Any member of the board have any questions?
Madam Chair, I do. I'm looking through the packet. What are your hours of operation? Is that...
Yeah, we're planning to be open for lunch and dinner and we're going to open at 11:30, we're planning for lunch, and then close at 9:00. And we're thinking about closing at 10:00 on Fridays and Saturdays during the summer.
Okay.
We think we'll be, you know, 10:00 will be the latest that we'll ever do.
Did you actually have the application? I don't...
We have the application.
It's not in my packet, like, in other words, I mean, all the, showing the hours and the request for the license and everything?
Okay, I've got the application for retail alcoholic beverage license here and...
It's usually, like, the one from the office and it has a...
Yeah. Oh, that's that one. That says from when to when they wish to be open.
Absolutely. Unless it's made on, because I don't see it on the, we just have to have that in writing and agreed upon, you know?
Well, I think we could make a motion based upon their requested hours.
Okay.
Right now. Does anyone else see it?
Is, if I may, while you're looking for that, is anyone, your employees tip certified?
We're scheduled, we have our serve safe tips class for six of us is scheduled for a week from tomorrow.
Okay.
We tend to request that all employees be tip certified, or all employees who will be serving alcohol be tip certified. So, that perhaps might be part of the motion. Which hours would you like us, would you like to be allowed to serve malt and wine?
You'd say between, if we're closing at 9:00 or 10:00?
Well, would you like your license to go, to extend until 11 o'clock? You mentioned you're closing at 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturdays, but, you know, it's for a year.
Are you thinking we might want to stay open an hour later than that in the summer?
I don't know.
Yeah, okay, so that could be.
We're asking you.
Yeah.
I'm asking you. You said you want to open at 11:30, but...
Yeah, okay, yes, 11:00 then, I guess.
Until 11:00 at night?
We don't plan on staying there that late, or so, I mean, you know, we're not planning to be open that late right now. I suppose if that, you know, if things really take off
That's why I'm asking. That's why I'm asking.
Thank you for your confidence.
Because you're hoping to open before, well, I think we're allowed to, well, we're certainly allowed to permit you beyond 10 o'clock at night, so that was the question. Any other questions from the board? I mean, again, this is just for wine and malt. This is not the victualler's permit. This is just for wine and malt right now. Oh, it is the wine malt common victualler license. Okay, so I have some things to read into the record from the Board of Health. We have a letter here from David Carrigan, our health agent, who says, "The applicant has made contact with the Health Department to discuss a job renovation project at this location. All state and local requirements relating to the preparation and service of food to the public are understood by the project improvements. All state and local requirements will be satisfied before a food service establishment permit will be issued to allow this business to serve food to the public." And then again, from the Building Department, "The Building Department is not opposed to the granting of a wine and malt common victualler's license for Jimmy Brown's Cafe. The restaurant has applied for a permit which will require inspections by the Inspection Services and Fire Prevention Departments before opening." Okay, but it's zoned properly, which allows retail sales, including restaurant by right, and there've been restaurants there in the past. So, and then since this is a public hearing, I guess I need to open this hearing to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this license, this permit? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to oppose the granting of this license? Okay.
I'm just curious, where is it going to be?
It's 339 East Falmouth Highway. It's, the last business that was there is called Diane's.
It's the old Davisville Grill.
Yes.
Davisville Grill. In the 60s, it was Skis Diner.
Okay, I know that one.
No, Johnny, then... Yeah, and then it was Sam Seafood. What?
Before I was born. Okay, so, what's the pleasure?
I'll make a motion. Do I have to repeat the hours? What are they?
Yeah, that's my question.
I'm sorry.
No, I can do it if you'd like. I had it all. Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the license for the hours of 11:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., contingent upon receiving all of the other necessary permits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Okay. There you have it, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your new business.
Good luck.
Okay, great. So, next we have...
May I suggest the minutes, Madam Chair?
Okay. We're going to move on to some sign hearings, but we have some minutes. Does anyone mind if we move to the minutes? Number 10?
Nope.
Okay. Do you have our minutes, please?
I didn't see them.
Towards the end of the packet? Any amendments to the minutes?
Just, Madam Chair, on the front page, it's just a spelling thing.
Mm-hmm.
Under, we start Scott Gelfey. You've got his new name? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Any other amendments to the minutes?
I make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Four, nothing. Thank you very much. As amended, with a spelling correction. Okay. So, at 7:45, we have committee interviews. I don't know if our interviewees are here yet. I believe Ms. Cover is here. Would you care, and also Ms. Gabriel is also here. So, if we move on then to our Cable Advisory Committee meeting, or interview first, we have, Ms. Kathleen Cover has volunteered to serve us on the Cable Advisory Committee. So, if you wouldn't mind coming to the lectern, please introducing yourself. Aye.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Cover. I live in West Falmouth.
And you're hoping to serve us on the Cable Advisory Committee. If you wouldn't mind taking a few moments and telling us why you'd like to serve and why we should appoint you, please.
I don't have any particular qualifications, but I did for the committee, in particular. I called Kevin Lynch a couple of months ago to discuss something about, I gave the suggestion that I thought that, well, we were talking about the way they program the different packages. And I said that I thought that every package should at least include CNN and the Weather Channel, especially the Weather Channel for public safety, you know, forecasting tornadoes or whatever. And I said, "There must be a lot of older people, for instance, that would love that, but they can't afford the big, you know, they don't want all the movie channels and Discovery, but they would like..." And he thought that was a good idea. And then he said, "By the way, would you like to be on the Cable Commission? Because we need somebody. We need somebody to make a quorum." So, I said, "I'd think about it," and then I decided I would. That's really why. I've never had a huge interest in the Cable Commission, to tell the truth, but I think it might be interesting and I'm willing to do it.
And you've served your communities in the past, as you see from your application?
I have.
Yes, which is fine. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I just want to thank you for your application. I happen to be the liaison this past year to that committee and I know they go through a lot. In fact, well, because Heather could attest to this, this happened to be the contract, the 10-year contract that they were negotiating. Liaisons don't give any opinions or anything, we just sit there and listen. And I learned a lot. And it was a lot of...
It's interesting.
Very interesting. And I have people coming up to me now in public because they've been happy lately with some rate increases. So, I just have them call the Cable Committee because I can't answer any questions. But there's been some mailings have gone out where people are unhappy. After the contract went through, there's some different things that are increasing.
And they weren't notified?
Yeah, so I can't speak for that. As a liaison, we just go to the meetings. But I want to thank you for your application and I learned a lot. So, you're going to have a lot of enjoyment in there if you like to get involved in.
Menucha, lots of reading.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else with any questions?
No.
No. Have you attended any of the meetings, sir? No, but I do see that Kevin Lynch is here in the audience.
Oh, he is. I've never actually...
Oh, there he is, right there. He's your liaison to FCTV. Well, we have two vacancies on the board. We have a position that is, that was vacated by Mr. Bowen that expires then June 30th of this year, but you could just reapply and you wouldn't have to stand in front of us again. And then could be appointed to three years if it's so, if the board so chooses. Or we have another vacancy that expires June 30th in 2013. So, what's the wishes of the board for the one, the two-month vacancy and then re-up for three years or to the one-year vacancy? Brent?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we appoint Ms. Cover to the term expiring June 30, 2013.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? So, with this, since you're filling an appointment that has not been filled, a term that has not been filled, you may serve this full year and a few months. And then you may re-up yourself three times, so for a total of 10 years, serving on the Cable Commission. So, welcome to the Cable Commission and thank you very much for volunteering, Ms. Cover. And there's Kevin in the back. I'm sure he can fill you in on everything you need to know.
Thank you.
Welcome to town politics. Okay, so, with that done, we now have Ms. Carolyn Gabriel, who's applied to, who's offered her services and expressed interest in serving as a member of the Agricultural Commission. Good evening, so please come to the lectern and if you could just introduce yourself to us and tell us why you'd care to serve on the Agricultural Commission?
I'm Carolyn Eve Gabriel. I grew up in West Falmouth and I've been away 25 years out west. I'm a naturopathic nutritionist and I'm interested in high-quality foods. And local foods are the highest quality. And I'd like to help support the agricultural efforts in this town and feed the population better.
Wow. Sounds like a fantastic match to me. You mentioned here in your, in your application that, basically everything that you just said, that you are a naturopathic nutritionist. What is, for those at home, what is a naturopathic nutritionist, please?
I earned a Master of Science in Nutrition Naturopathic Medical School, which is the old school of medicine prior to modern medicine, allopathic, which is sort of squelching symptoms, whereas naturopathy uses herbs and homeopathy and traditional forms of medicine that were available well before modern pharmacy. And food is one of those modalities used to treat people and keep us well.
Wow. Okay, and, well, any questions from the board right now? Well, I could ask you a million questions right now about what you're talking about.
You can read my book.
I can read your book. Okay, well, please, have you attended any of the Agricultural Commission meetings?
Yes.
And is there, what do you see that they are doing that you might be able to help them with, or what might you see as a direction that Falmouth can go in? How are we agriculturally, I guess, John asked, in Falmouth?
Well, we have a long way to go. I think that there are other towns that are more pro-agriculture. I think that there are probably more consumers here who don't get their needs met with high-quality foods. Seems that I like their extension into aquaculture and I like sea vegetables and shellfish and all fish. I think that I like the preservation of the silo and farms and more farmers' markets and outlets for small people to grow and to make available foods to the community. I like that, I think I learned that you can have chickens on less than five acres now.
Oh, yes.
I think that's wise.
You can have roosters on less than five acres, according to my neighborhood.
So, I like the issues that are up, but I have a lot to learn.
Okay, great. And, yes, I, as members of the board here know, that indeed the town is, has been considering writing an aquaculture program. And I know that the Agricultural Commission, I believe that they've volunteered, they've stepped up to become greatly involved with it. I know that the Department of Natural Resources, the DNR, is currently working on it. But it'd be nice if we could get all segments of town volunteers and then put something together that's cohesive and coherent to help encourage aquaculture, which is indeed still agriculture in town.
Right.
So, thank you for volunteering to help with this. Any other questions from the board? Well, we have one opening and it is indeed until the end of this June, so, again, if you so desire, you can just reapply and we wouldn't have to go through the interview process again. And then you could serve up to three concurrent terms for nine years, plus these two months tacked on to it. So, the motion, that would be a term expiring June 30th, 2012.
Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Ms. Gabriel to the Agricultural Commission for the term expiring June 30, 2012.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much for volunteering. And if you just go to town hall in the near future, you can be sworn in. And...
Madam Chair, just as a side note, we got into a slippery slope last year by not doing committee reappointments and waiting, especially in regulatory boards, until the end of June. I don't know how long Madam Chairman is going to be out, but I would think that we would want to start moving that process forward.
I believe we are starting to move that forward. I think we've started scheduling things for late May and into early June with reappointments. But, thanks for bringing that up, Kevin, because I remember that too, last year. I don't believe Madam Chair is going to be out much longer. Wish her speedy recovery. Okay, so, let's see, we're way ahead of schedule here, tight meeting. Is there anyone here for the signing hearing for the quilt show at Falmouth High School? Great. Well, if the board doesn't mind... Well, if, if the board doesn't mind, then we'll move ahead to our eight o'clock agenda item. Yes, Brent?
Actually, because it's a hearing, Madam Chair, I believe we have to sched, to begin on schedule.
And I, I had asked about that earlier, but because these aren't advertised in a certain way, we don't need to keep doing this? Or how should we, how do you suggest we move on? We've got, all we have left on the agenda are three sign hearings, one for eight, one for 8:05, and one for 8:10.
Could I, Madam Chair, could I suggest?
Okay, reports?
The town manager's report and-
Okay. That's fine with me. Move on to the town manager's report.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Stephanie and I were pleased to attend the Falmouth Historical Society's annual dinner this past Tuesday evening. The event at the Seacrest Hotel was very well-attended, and I was happy to present a proclamation from the board, Board of Selectmen, in honor of the Falmouth Visiting Nurse Association, which was being recognized for their decades of dedicated service to Falmouth and all of Cape Cod. Also, members of the board, on Friday I attended a meeting of the ICMA, which is our, Heather and my professional management, municipal management association. The 2013 Conference Planning Committee, that happened to be held in Ashland. As I've advised the board, I've been a, a member of this planning committee for the past couple of years, along with several other Massachusetts managers. This is in preparation for the ICMA Annual Conference, which will be held in Boston in the fall of 2013. My thanks and compliments to our colleagues in the Department of Public Works for their spring cleanup work, including the repairs and painting to the ornamental fence enclosing the town common, and their priming and painting of the major anchor, which ornaments, ornaments Town Hall Square, among other projects. We thank them for their work. As the board may have noted, the town's EDIC has announced that they are holding a brief press event on the steps of Town Hall at 2:00 PM tomorrow, that would be May 1, to announce a new economic development initiative and partnership. And I've attached copies of press releases transmitted to the board for that exciting new initiative to be announced tomorrow. Also, Madam Chair, members of the board, I want to congratulate Chief Riallo and his officers on the Falmouth Police Department, members of the Sheriff's Department, and the state police for their tireless work in successfully locating a missing person in Woods Hole, in the Woods Hole area, who was lost overnight. We're very happy through that extraordinary bit of teamwork to work through the night and also work with neighbors in the area as well, through the benefit of a reverse 911 call to secure the safety of that missing individual. So my thanks and compliments to all, and particularly our police department for the excellent lead that they took in that process. Also, Madam Chair, members of the board, yesterday I was happy to join the Falmouth Road Race Board and Selectman Kevin Murphy in the dedication of the Tommy Leonard Historic Starting Line at Captain Kidd's in Woods Hole, in honor of the nationally and world-renowned Falmouth Road Race. So it was a great event, well-attended as well, and the weather could not have been better. So my compliments to Tommy Leonard for his great vision and dedication, Falmouth Road Race Board, and all of those who have worked tirelessly to make that such a successful event through the years in Falmouth. And we look forward to that event, as has been approved by the board this August. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julian. Any comments or questions for Julian? Well, I know that you're having a press conference tomorrow on this new EDIC program, but is there anything that you can leak to us ahead of time? It's a very exciting program, that it looks like the EDIC is, is moving in a new direction.
Well, I know our, our liaison is Selectman Kevin Murphy, who I think-
Who has no voice.
Might be interested in-
I'll try to explain a little bit. Coastal Capital is a, a funding organization that utilizes a lot of small business grants. There are many small businesses that need a small portion to bridge the gap between what they can fund and when they can get, actually qualify for a small business grant. By leveraging a company like Coastal Capital to help bridge this gap, you'll find that we will create jobs in the town of Falmouth. This money will be paid back into a revolving fund, and all folks will have to go through a rigorous background check like you would for any banking loan or scenario. So the EDIC is quite comfortable with it. It's a way to not just sit on the funds we have there and make sure that we can invest in our own community. This will be Falmouth-based and Falmouth-based startup companies.
Yeah, I was talking to, to Michael Galasso at one of our Economic Sustainability discussions a few weeks ago, and I know that, that he expressed great excitement in the EDIC for seeming to get involved with, sort of, it's almost like Falmouth getting into micro loans and for, for small business here in town. Looks like a productive way to use some of the, some of the reserves that the EDIC has from the real estate that we once had in our Technology Park. Any other questions? Or any individual selectmen's reports? Anybody care to share with us for five minutes what you've done in the past couple of weeks? In the past week, as far as meetings?
Lucky I can't talk today.
Yeah, I guess, I guess we are. This is making the meeting much shorter, Kevin. Thank you.
There are a lot of folks happy at home.
I'll, I'll contribute to, to the selectmen's report. Last week, with the Economic Sustainability Subcommittee that Brent and I are working on it, unfortunately, because we're in the process of interviewing members of the scientific and technology sector in town, we're having to go to them for their meetings as opposed to them being able to come to us. So we're meeting during the workday, which makes it a little difficult for Brent, although I know we've just, we've been working on trying to get a meeting going in the near future that, that we can actually attend. And last week, we met with, the three of us met with, with the Director of Academic Research at MBL and also the Director of Human Resources down in the hole. And we had really engaging conversation for about an hour and a half, perhaps two hours, about MBL and some of the other nonprofits, or not-for-profits in town, and their needs and their goals for the future. And we're just trying to figure out how Falmouth can help the, the sectors that bring jobs and bring people and bring revenues to the town, how we can help them stay in town and perhaps help them achieve their goals, make things a little easier for them. And one, one intriguing component of our discussion revolved around conference centers. None of us realized that, that MBL actually has a couple hundred beds down in the hole, and they host a number of international conferences every year. And we started talking about how, you know, wouldn't it be great if Falmouth were to have some kind of conference center that, that could host larger international conferences and more often in town? It was, it was an intriguing discussion. We were talking about public-private relationships, partnerships, and, you know, MBL seemed to think that all the nonprofits in town could probably fill a conference center 10 months out of the year. So it was, it was a really intriguing take. I mean, this is why we're, we're going out and talking. I mean, again, for those of you who do, aren't aware of the group, there are two members of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the Planning Board, and two members of the EDIC who sit on, on this committee. And then I see in the audience some of our regular attendees. We're trying to put together the Economic Sustainability segment of the local comprehensive plan, trying to see where Falmouth will be, you know, 20 years, 50 years out into the future, trying to maintain Falmouth's economic and, and demographic viability. And, you know, we're going to representatives from various sectors in town that we've identified as a group, and it's really rewarding and productive process that we're, that we're going through right now, because ideas are surfacing that we never would have come up with just sitting alone at a table in a committee meeting. And this week, we're going to be meeting with Hui down in the hole on Wednesday, and we'll just keep taking it forward. But I hope that we can start putting pencil to paper, pen to paper, in the near future and start thinking about direction for Falmouth, forward direction and constructive direction for Falmouth, not only bringing high-end jobs to town, but also keeping people here and, and keeping our industries here, the ones that we've already cultivated and allowing them to thrive into the future. So it's really invigorating work. Again, we're meeting in the hole on Wednesday, and then I believe we're, the next week, we're going to sort of decompress and discuss what we've, what we've accomplished. So in two weeks, it'll be more of a workshop meeting just for the board itself. But again, these are all of the meetings.
May I?
Yeah.
May I? It's more of a question, I think, for Julian. We had a joint meeting with the ZBA some time ago. And I know, you know, my famous list, one of the things on here, I know things have a tendency in government to move at a snail's pace, but one of the, their biggest concern was regarding getting their handbook redone. You know, it's a mess.
The ZBA.
Yeah. And also assisting them with some type of enforcement powers. My, my, I think what I, the statement I made that night was, you know, we leave these meetings sometimes so ready to go and do something, and then we sort of forget about it. And I know governments are supposed to be able to multitask, and I know we have a lot of tasking we're doing now, but is there anything to report at all on that yet? Or we'll be able to sit down and discuss it, maybe reach out to them at some point?
Well, great question, Selectman Vraga. My memory is that either this week or next, a meeting's been set up with our colleagues on the ZBA, and so I'll have more to report after that.
Oh, okay.
And that is one of the follow-ups from the discussion to which you're referring.
Okay. Thank you very much, Julian. Appreciate it.
Anyone else with a report? Great, and it's eight o'clock, just as scheduled. So we have a sign hearing with Ms. Porteous, if you wouldn't mind coming to the lectern and identif, speaking at the microphone, so that the viewers at home can hear your testimony and identify yourself too, for the record takers and for all those in attendance.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Porteous, and I'm the co-chairman for the quilt show for the crazy quilters of Cape Cod, who are based, most of our members are in Falmouth. We meet in Falmouth. And this is our second biennial show that we're having, and we're looking for a permit for three signs to be put up on the 29th and 30th of June of this year. We'll be having the show at the high school.
Okay. And your three signs, you wanted to put them at the corner of Route 28 at the off-ramp at Brick Hill Road? And then also at the corner of Gifford Street and Brick Hill? And then one at Falmouth High School and Brick Hill, too? And you've been before the Design Review Committee? And they mentioned that your signs will be 18 by 24 inches, which equals three square feet. And one sign-
Two of them.
Two of them.
Yeah.
That's right. And one of them will be six square feet in front of the school. And they'll be foam core with wood frame placed in wire stands, and the Design Review Committee voted to recommend these signs to the Board of Selectmen. So do you perchance have a muster of, or an image for the signs for us?
Uh, no, I don't know. They're, they're, I wrote, I did put it, did you get the packet that I left with Ms. Davidson?
Uh, we've got, I've got a map here that shows us where they're going to be. I don't see a copy.
There was another, they just say quilt show with an arrow.
Oh, yeah, they say quilt show on them. Yep.
Yeah. That's it. Very simple.
Then we'll sort of like campaign signs.
Yeah, that's it. They're like a real estate sign, really.
Okay.
Two of them are, the other one's an A-frame.
And they have arrows on them and they're directional, so will help mitigate traffic issues in town?
Just so people know where we are. We feel, with it being the high school, it's easy to find. But this way, it's just so that people coming in on 28 will know which direction to go.
Okay, and so this is for the weekend of June 29th? Is it a weekend?
Yes, it is. It's Friday, Saturday.
Okay, Friday, Saturday.
Put them out Friday morning, pick them up Saturday afternoon.
Great, thank you. And what does the board, it's a pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve these signs.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We wish you a successful quilt show.
Thank you.
High attendance.
Yes, I hope so, too.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I just may, I see Mr. Fox sitting there. He had something under summary of actions. It actually passed the old stone dark. I hate to see you sit here the rest of the night. Yeah, it's all-
Summary of actions is all done, gentlemen.
We already went through it. You're all approved.
Everything's passed.
I just don't want you to sit there the rest of the night.
Well, I did call the secretary.
Thank you, David.
She said show up at eight.
Oh, well, we took it earlier. We had, thank you.
We had a short dog park.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, no problem. Thank you, David, for pointing that out. Okay, so now we have a, yeah, at 8:05, we have a sign hearing for Molly's Parking, and I know I, I see Ben Metzakappa in the audience, a representative of Molly's Parking. Ben, nice to see you again.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Becoming a regular event here?
It has been regular for many years. I'm Ben Metzakappa. I represent Molly's Parking, my family's business. I'm here once again to get permission to use our handheld sign, which we've done for many years in the past. And the past few years, there hasn't been any real resistance or problems of any kind. So with that, I ask for permission for this sign from you.
Okay, and the Design Review Committee has approved the sign as previously designed? And I know that last year, we had approved Molly's Parking's use of this sign according to certain conditions, and-
Sounds like a something-
Star Trek. Is that Star Trek? Or Lost in Space? It was Lost in Space. Sorry about that. Anyhow, we, we had some conditions last year that we attached to this. I don't know if it's a pleasure of the board to-
Want me to read them? Or, although down here, I mean, when we approved it last year, it said approved with conditions. I don't know if they have to be read into the record or not.
I don't think we need to read them into the record, unless the board wishes to read them into the record. And the board can either approve the sign as just free or with conditions. It's the pleasure of the board.
So move with the conditions.
Second.
Okay, so the conditions that were drafted, or that were reiterated on May 24th, 2011, the six conditions? And just so, for discussions sake, so that Mr. Metzakappa knows, there's no difference in a signed permit is required by the Building Department, which I believe you have. Sign is approved for one season, the signholder will act courteously, will stand only on Palmer Avenue, may only be used on Palmer Avenue, and Stevenson Authority Block is closed, and the signholder will not interfere with the flow of traffic, with pedestrian traffic, as has happened in the past. So we have a motion on the table in a second. All those in favor say, oh, it's a hearing. Is there any, anyone here to speak in favor of the signs? I should have done this for the quilters. Did anyone oppose the quilters? Anyone in opposition to Molly's Parking signs? Okay. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no?
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you for the timely, expeditious-
You're welcome.
Movement of the meeting. It's nice.
Yeah. Tight meetings. Used to running a classroom. Crack that whip. Okay. So on that note, then, I, my apologies to anyone who wanted to testify for or against the quilt signs. Is there anyone here who intended to speak for or against the quilters? Okay. And I'll hold my piece. Okay. So then, we also have, we have another sign hearing at 8:10 for an off-premise sign for the Falmouth Ice Arena, Thomas B. Landers Road and Technology Parks. Do we have anybody here? Ah, yes. Okay, I see Mr., are you, Mr. McGowan? No. No, you're not. I recognize you, though, from being with the Ice Arena.
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore, of course. We have a request here for a sign to be off-premise on the corner of Thomas B. Landers Road and Technology Park Drive. And you have indeed been in front of the Design Review Committee. Good evening, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If you could please identify yourself for the record.
Paul Moore, president of Falmouth Youth Hockey.
Thank you. Thank you. So you have a sign that you'd like to erect, not on your property?
Yeah, what we're doing is, we're taking our existing sign on Palmer Ave. We'd like to move it to the New Rink. I was asked to bring to you tonight the outline, the property line of the, of our existing site, and show where the sign's gonna go. Thomas Landers here, heading east, Technology Park, second intersection, Technology Park. Here's the order of our property, and right here is where we propose the sign to go. A lot of thought went in it. We wanted it away from Technology Park a little bit for visibility. There's also an existing Technology Park sign there now. There's a fire hydrant here, and this is about 190 some odd feet away from the corner of our property. And then we thought it would be good, we're right on the edge of the corner of the building, the existing building, and, which you can see this mark here is where we propose the sign to go.
Okay, so I know that the sign, the design review committee has approved the sign itself, which is your pre-existing sign, and it's in front of us today because we believe that the narrow strip of land where you wish to place it is actually town property. And this afternoon, we noticed that the design review committee said that that strip probably belongs to the town, and I'm wondering if we have a decision on that yet? We don't. So we're not positive if that's town property or somebody else's property, so-
How close, if I may, how close is it to the road, the sign?
Sign's gonna be probably 10 feet off the road.
Well, I thought we had a 15-foot, no? Okay.
Yeah, and so we're not quite sure where the layout is, and Brent, you had a question?
Yes, it was actually alluding to the public way, but I know Thomas B. Landers Road is a rather wide public way, and it seems to me that they could place the sign at the edge of the public way. It would still be significantly far off the road, that it wouldn't present any sort of a hazard to drivers, and be outside of this questionable parcel. I think it could work.
Yeah, so we had a suggestion this afternoon that perhaps we, the board, could approve this contingent upon the town engineers approving the final sighting of the sign, both regarding safety and ownership, and that perhaps we have town council chime in on it, and that we make the approval revocable tonight, just in case that is not our property. Because if it's not our property, we obviously can't approve it.
Well, if it's not our property, they could get the permission of whoever's property it is.
That is correct.
So our approval could be for the off-premise sign.
That is correct. We could approve it for the off-premise sign, but then, and we'd want to have it, though, approved also if it is our property by the town engineers to make sure that it doesn't cause any driving hazards or issues with traffic flow. Heather?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's really, there are two issues. I think you can approve the off-premise sign.
We can?
Yes, and I think you can also approve the placement of a sign, subject to review by town council and the town engineer. The town council, only that we would want to have a revocable authorization to place the sign there, in the event there's ever any roadwork and it needs to be removed. So that's just part of the permanent decision.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve under those terms. I think it's a great location. You surely don't want it right on the corner. This is the closest to Route 28, where many people who aren't familiar where the Ice Arena is, will give them a little heads up when the turn is coming.
Second.
Okay, open for discussion? I think your points are right on, Mr. Murphy. So all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. No? You've got your sign, as long as it's our property, and the town engineer approves it.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board, thank the community. Certainly is going to be a great community benefit, and we, the support we've gotten has been just unbelievable. We're gonna have ICE in probably two weeks, and we're scheduled for our June 16th open. But certainly, this board, and Kevin, you go way back, way back to those feasibility studies eight years ago, and it's been a long haul, but this town has been phenomenal to us, and we hope we can give back to this community for years to come through a great facility like the Ice Arena.
Thank you very much for having such a fantastic project, and best of luck with your opening.
Thank you very much.
Don't you see the ICE? Wow. Okay. Have a fine evening.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, so at that, then, we seem to have, do you have any correspondence? So then, if I may, we have, we started an executive session before our meeting tonight, and we have suspended until the close of this meeting, so I'd be willing to entertain a motion to return to executive session regarding pending claims and litigation of wind turbines, Chapter 30A, and then to close, and not to return to public session.
So moved. Second.
Kevin Murphy, aye.
Braga, aye.
Putnam, aye.
Fratton, aye. Thank you very much.
I'm Margaret Gifford. We work for the global real estate company Sotheby's International Realty.
Margaret, how long have you been in real estate?
About 200 years. How about you?
I'm coming up on it. What is the real estate market like right now, Margaret?
Well, interest rates are very favorable, there's great inventory, and it is a good time for buyer and sellers.
And you know, Falmouth is so wonderful. Not only is it a beautiful place, but there are so many outdoor activities, cultural events, and opportunities to volunteer.
Isn't Falmouth great?